All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to get started with today's policy session for September 8th, 2015, the Phoenix City Council. It appears we do have a quorum present, so we'll start today's policy session with any city council information and/or follow-up requests. Does any member of the council have information and/or follow-up requests for today's meeting? Councilman Cecil, please.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. One, I want to thank everybody for enjoying their holiday and I hope everybody had a safe Labor Day holiday. It means a lot to a lot of families that they're able to spend together. And doing what I normally do to try to set an agenda to move forward, we're about to enter into labor negotiations with the different groups here at the city of Phoenix, so I'm going to lay a foundation with the police in particular. I will be supporting a pay raise for officers if it comes forward. There are going to be a couple of caveats on that. One, that there be no shenanigans played like there were last time. And then, two, no revenue increases need to be attached to that, and I'm going to explain why. The city of Phoenix has more money this year than it's ever had in its history, in the history of the city of Phoenix. We have an incredible amount of money in the city of Phoenix. We should be able to pay our officers better than they're being paid right now. They're under stress. There was a situation that even occurred last week. We've got individuals, and I imagine there's some even in the audience today. These type of real, what I would consider to be very negative attitudes toward our officers do lead to what's happening around the country, where officers are being targeted, where officers are being shot at. And if people think that the rhetoric is safe and it's secure, it's not. So when we start calling our officers murderers, I think we've overcrossed those bounds in the city. Now, do people have a legitimate reason to concern, race concerns? I think everybody has a First Amendment right on that. But there's a baseline of where we should be able to go as a city, and we need to push back when individuals start calling them murderers. That is bad. When people, and police officers in particular, feel that they can't even go to a restaurant in their uniform without feeling like they're going to be targeted, we have a problem in the city. We have a problem in this country, and it's something that I think that there needs to be pushed back on that. Again, I believe individuals have a freedom of speech. They want to provide constructive criticism, but when that line gets crossed, I will push back on that. And I am going to be very strongly supportive of pay raises for our officers this year. Couple things then, too. Craig Doyle, I don't know if he's here. Craig, could you stand up, please? Craig is my new chief of staff. Craig was the marketing president for Comerica Bank, did an incredible job here in Arizona. But here are some of the other things that he's, other than being a fantastic father and husband, he was also, he served 26 years in the Navy as a reservist in active duty. He served in Iraq. He was the first reservist, first reservist to serve in active duty commanding officer for the theater-wide logistics operation, I believe, out of Japan. And he's responsible for naval logistics from the international dateline to India. So in other words, he's involved in war planning in this country. But he's also served on the Arizona Chamber of Commerce, Arizona Bankers Association, Great GPEC, Greater Phoenix Economic Council, Phoenix Chamber of Commerce, and Arizona, the Arizona Technology Council. Those are just some of the things he serves. So we're very lucky to have him head up our, my office. I'm really proud to have him be involved in, you know, helping shape policy for the city of Phoenix. Now, just three things that are coming up. Tomorrow, on September 9th, between 5:30 and 8, the firefighters are going to be presenting burgers, brew, and brawn servation. Servathon, sorry. I can't read it after I highlight it, sorry, that's my fault. And it's going to be tomorrow between 5:30 and 8 at the Windy City Sports Grill on 2121 East Highland Avenue. And the mayor and I are going to be at this one, the North Central Phoenix Homeowners Association, on September 17th between 6 and 8. And that's going to be at the All Saints Episcopal Church and Day School, 6230 North Central Avenue. And then, the Awatuki Community Garden Monthly Meeting is going to be September 15th at 7:30 a.m., and it's going to be at the Hillside Spot at 4740 East Warner Road. And, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other city council information and/or follow-up requests? Councilman Nowakowski, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just really want to thank Riverside School District for donating 20 desktop computers to our Smith Parks Recreation Center, South Phoenix Youth Center, and also the Hayden Neighborhood Recreation Center. The special gift of computers go out to needy families, needy kids that wouldn't have computer otherwise besides the computers that they use in their schools. So I just really want to thank Riverside for reaching out and making this donation. Also, I want to remind people that this Saturday is Mexican Independence Day, and we brought it back to Maryville, so we should have the largest Independence Fiesta out in Maryville, right there at the Ashing Pavilion, right there on 83rd Avenue in Cano. Starts from 4:00 p.m. until 11 o'clock. The Mexican Consulate will be out there doing his grito ceremony, so we invite everyone to come on down. And if you're in downtown Phoenix, you probably will see hundreds and hundreds of Marines walking around. We are starting Marine Week this week, and there are all kinds of great activities for the family. So come celebrate the US, United States Marines and honor their dedication to our freedom. You're going to have about 600 Marines that are showcasing their equipment, aircrafts. There's going to be bands, concerts, community special events going on. So bring the family. It's a great opportunity to see those men and women in uniform and all the great things that they do. So if you want to schedule, you can look up www.marinesmel. So that's great events, great time to bring down the family and see all these men and women that give their lives on a daily basis for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other members of the council? Councilman Gallego, you want to go next?
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you to Councilman Nowakowski for highlighting Marine Week. I think it really will be a great chance for people to learn about the United States Marine Corps, and it's a family-focused event, not a recruiting event, so they really do want people to come in from all over the valley, bring kids and others.
Do you know any Marines?
And as a proud wife of a Marine, I am very excited that we will be highlighting Marines and some of the neat partnerships that the city has with the Marine Corps. We learned last week at the Downtown Aviation Subcommittee meeting about the important partnership that Goodyear Airport provided in keeping our equipment safe and our marine aviators safe during World War II. So even as someone who pays attention to the Marine Corps, that was something that I did not know. And they're bringing the United States Marine Corps dog, Sergeant Chesty, and apparently he outranks my husband. And then, some Marine Corps spouses and I are going to have a reception for Marine Corps families on Thursday at 6:00 p.m. at Cityscape before the free screening of The Avengers that the Cityscape group will be doing, and so we encourage Marine Corps families to join us for that. We had a busy summer in District 8, and we're excited to welcome several new neighborhood associations. So thank you to Kara from our office, who's been working to build block watches and neighborhood associations or to support the ones that are growing on their own. So we are excited to welcome Creighton Square Neighborhood Association and New Homes Neighborhood Association. We were also excited to welcome the Refugee Police Advisory Board this summer, which had its inaugural meeting with our police department and refugee community. And I want to thank Detective Samudio, Assistant Chief Kurttenbach, and Chief Yana for supporting that important line of communication and getting that off the ground. Also want to thank the voters for supporting the Parks and Preserve Initiative because it helped us open a dog park and new basketball courts at Esteban Park, bringing some much-needed resources to the southeast portion of District 8. And thank you to our Parks and Recreation staff, as well as many of our first responders who helped us with a great opening that even included some of the working dogs that are part of the city of Phoenix. We also are excited that on this Saturday, District 8's Harmon Library will be celebrating its 65th anniversary, and excited that the mayor will be kicking that off. Thank you to the library for 65 years of great work in that area. And finally, I would like to welcome Cole Libera to the District 8 team. He will be participating with our staff through AmeriCorps in national service, so welcome to the team, Cole.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Council Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of thoughts here. See, we can start with this Thursday. This Thursday, we'll be attending a B2D Business Alliance meeting. B2D is Bethany to Dunlap on 19th Avenue. For all of those businesses that we continue to help support through the light rail construction, it's been a very successful alliance, many businesses. It's not just businesses, people from faith-based organizations that are nearby, education institutes nearby. We all come together and, of course, support our local businesses. In fact, I'd like to thank Pastor Hill and Shannon McBride from Open Door Fellowship, as that is where the next meeting will be, that is this Thursday. The address there is 8301 North 19th Avenue. We look forward to that. Next week, we have a couple of neighborhood meetings. Next Tuesday, September 15th at 6:00 p.m. at the Maryville Community Center, we will have our next Maryville meeting to just get feedback from the residents and the business leaders, community leaders, and of course, bring everyone up to speed on what is happening right here in Phoenix. We just came off of an election cycle where some major propositions have been passed, so there may be some questions on what that exactly means to some of our neighborhoods, like Proposition 104, for example, the transportation initiative. That is next Tuesday, the 15th, the very next day, Wednesday, the 16th. We will have a similar meeting at the Hope Center, in the Vita Paz neighborhood, near 107th Avenue and Camelback, so we look forward to that meeting as well. And if you have not checked out the SPHX website, the SPHX is something that we've been talking about for a while now, please check it out, yesphx.com. As our tech and startup ecosystems continue to grow into the most generous community for our entrepreneurs, you will find that yesphx.com has been a very good source on just keeping up with what is going on, what is happening. The best part that you'll see there is that it is truly driven by the community. It's driven by our entrepreneurs, and it's a pleasure to just continue to work with this ecosystem. You will find that yesphx is not just the entrepreneur. Our education institutions are tied into it. Of course, our city is tied into it. It's been a lot of fun, and all are welcome. And lastly, Ubic actually put some information out, and I would like to congratulate Kahoots, Phoenix's very first coworking space and now largest coworking space. Kahoots was actually named one of the top 10 coworking spaces in the world, not just the United States, but in the world. So think of what that, again, that drumbeat and what that means for, not only our country, but, you know, what it means for the city of Phoenix. So congratulations to Jenny Poon, Chris and Romaine, Odine Domingo, and everyone else, all the good people there at Kahoots. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilman Pastor, do you have any?
I do.
Excellent.
I had the pleasure on Friday to attend the Arizona Law Enforcement Academy, class number 479, which included three Phoenix recruits. Congratulations to them in their whole training process, and it was really nice to see the penning of completing their training, and so I wanted to wish them congratulations. I would also like to welcome Facility Source to District 4. Facility Source is a world leader in integrated facility management and is expanding its presence in Phoenix, relocating an existing office space in Midtown. The company offers restaurants, retail, and other businesses innovative, high-quality management and maintenance of their facilities. Will occupy 17,000 square feet of commercial office at 2020 North Central Avenue. And tomorrow, I get the pleasure of cutting the ribbon. This is one of the fun ones. Coffee chats will begin in October for District 4. I also attended the GPEC Economic Outlook, which I really enjoyed, and enjoyed all the speakers that were there and explaining to what our outlook will be like in the future. Councilwoman Gallego and I will be leading the Mine Brothers Keeper, and we will be actively working on a strategic plan, and hopefully we'll get it here by January. The other piece is Monterey Park. Over the summer, we were able to do a Fit Phoenix. It's just a matter of time when it cools down that we're able to, be able to open it up to the neighborhood, and we could be the first ones to walk on the Fifth Phoenix Track around Monterey Park. And then, on 7th Avenue and Camelback, where I am organizing with the community, an association, a business association regarding the four corners and all the dynamics that are happening within the light rail. So, very busy, and I also want to let everybody know that Friday Profiles of Success, want to congratulate all those that are receiving awards. It's our kickoff to Hispanic Heritage Month, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ames?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention a couple highlights this summer that were very rewarding in District 1, the Nortera West, groundbreaking. I really want to congratulate economic development staff that were there and helped put it all together. It is moving ahead very rapidly. They are building the first tower. They are leasing quite rapidly, and hopefully that will bring the second tower construction underway very soon. We also were able to attend the very successful Arizona Humane Society's 17th Annual Pet Telethon fundraiser. I will tell you, it was a sold-out crowd, and I did resist. There was one little black guy that just was so cute and fluffy and wanted to go home with me, but my husband said he'd kill me, so he didn't get to go home with me. Rec staff did a fantastic job at Telephone Pioneer Park. If you haven't had an opportunity to go to Telephone Pioneer Park, it is a park that has been around for 20-plus years. It was originally AT&amp;T before, I think it was AT&amp;T, I think it was Bell. The retirees there pulled their money, built this park, and it is, I think, the only accessible park that has a pool for disabled people, but they have really, really spruced it up. They added a pickle court, and I had not been acquainted with pickle enthusiasts prior to this event. You want to get out of their way, because, I mean, they're serious players. It was great fun, it was a great event, and it has really spurred the determination for more of these courts throughout the city. So I'm sure all of you will be hearing about the great need for more pickle courts, pickleball courts. I want to congratulate Valley Metro. They hosted the ADA 25th Anniversary Awards Ceremony. It was very well-attended. It was well, well-done, and I really want to thank them and let them know we sincerely offer our appreciation for that. We also had a new restaurant opening at the Happy Valley Town Center, Cafe Rio Mexican Grill. Yeah, had lines waiting to go in for this one. Very exciting. Coming up this Friday, our first dog park in District 1 at Deems Hills. We're very excited. Everyone's invited to come out to the Deems Hills Park at 6:30. We cut the ribbon and bring the dog, and we're going to have lots of fun. And then, on Friday, September 18th is, and it's changed, it's the third Friday, not the fourth, for District 1 breakfast. And it was a change of sites. It will be at the Radisson Phoenix North Metro Center, and that's a newly renovated hotel at Metro Center. And so we want you to come. Guest speaker is going to be Sheriff Joe Arpaio. Should bring out a crowd, so we invite everyone to come. It's a buffet breakfast, and the first one's on District 1. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. Lot going on around the city, and District 3 is no different. We're going to be having the 35th reunion of John Jacobs School in District 3. That's going to be on this Thursday, September 11th. So I'll be out there for a parade. The parade's starting at 9:30 in the morning, and just one of the very best neighborhoods in District 3. Great folks, really involved in their community, and that should be a lot of fun. Also, on September 16th, I'll be at Thunderbird High School, 5:30 p.m. They're going to be renaming the football field there at Thunderbird High School for the longtime coach, Jack Story, so it's going to be renamed Jack Story Field, so definitely looking forward to that. That'll be before the freshman football game. And then, also, coffee chats will be starting back up in District 3 on September 22nd, Tuesday, September 22nd at 7:30 in the morning. We will be over at PV Mall. Actually, we have our own coworking space in District 3 called Elevate. It's actually right above the food court in PV Mall, and our guest will be Congressman David Schweickert, who will be updating us on all that's going on back in Congress. And then, finally, if any groups within District 3 are scheduling a gain event, so that's Getting Arizonans Involved in Your Neighborhoods event on October 17th, please contact our office by social media, email, or by phone at 602-262-7441, because we love to hit as many of those gain events as we can. Thanks so much, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gates. I'll just add a quick couple points before we get on to our more formal agenda. First, Ms. City Manager, as you know, the National Public Works Association had their big annual conference here in Phoenix, Arizona, so 5,000 or 6,000 public works professionals came to Phoenix, and they recognized the top 10 public works officials in the United States of America, and our own John Trujillo was ranked in that top 10. Of course, we know he's number one, so I don't know who else is on that list, but deserves recognition. We know what great work he does here locally for us, particularly with our Reimagine Phoenix and some of the other sustainability programs. But congratulations, John Trujillo, recognition well-deserved. Then I also want to say thank you to all of our city staff. Just over a week ago, though, we had a really bad storm here in Phoenix. It took a lot of work by the professionals here at the city of Phoenix to clean up that city, and so really a special thank you to our police officers, firefighters, public works, streets, parks, the whole team came together in a very, very coordinated, well-organized response. I think the community was very, very much appreciative of how quickly our city professionals were able to respond, which could have been a very, very difficult situation. So thank you, Ms. City Manager. Make sure you pass on to each of those departments. I know I speak on behalf of everyone up here on the dais. Our thanks for the very high-level professionalism demonstrated under difficult circumstances. Ms. City Manager, do you have any reports or budget requests?
Mayor, on September 22nd will be our first budget update of the year, so I will defer to that time. We also have some good news from Moody's Investor Service that will be discussed in the transportation item, so I won't take any further time and invite you to go to the call for executive session.
Yeah, do we have consent agenda, Vice Mayor? Is there consent agenda?
Mayor, there is no consent.
No consent today, then how about a call for an executive session? Do we have a call for an executive session? Is there an executive session call today, please? Okay, good. Do we know the date on it?
No, there isn't. Thank you. Okay. Need one more. Mayor, in accordance with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona Revise Statute Section 38-431.02.A, meet an executive session on Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015, at 1:00 p.m. in the East Conference Room, 12th Floor of Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
We have motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have two items on today's agenda. The first item will be item number two, which is titled Transportation 2050 Next Steps. I know it was referenced by a few people up here on the dais, but on August 25th, the people of Phoenix overwhelmingly supported our Move Phoenix Plan, a 35-year plan for the future of transportation for the city of Phoenix, and so it was gratifying to see that the people of Phoenix overwhelmingly did support the vision put forth by Mary Peters, who chaired our campaign, the former Secretary of Transportation, the Leadership Committee that was supported, of course, by this council to put on the ballot. It is a long-term plan, and so it really took the long view about how we can advance our economy, how we can advance our city by transportation infrastructure investment. And of course, the question on a lot of people's minds is, okay, it passed. It passed by a very good margin. Now what? What's next? And so we wanted to make sure at our very first policy session of the city council that we present to the public, at least our professional city staff thoughts about what are the immediate next steps and then some of the longer-term issues, before I hand it over to Maria Hyatt, our Transportation Director. Want to see if any other member of the council would like to say any introductory comments relative to Transportation 2050 Next Steps. All right? Mario, sorry, Mario Panega, our Deputy City Manager, who oversees much of these departments. You kick off the show, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm very excited to be here today, along with Ray DeValena, Street Transportation Director, Albert Santana, our Light Rail Coordinator, and as you mentioned, Maria Hyatt, our Public Transit Director. Mayor, you mentioned that two weeks ago today, voters approved Proposition 104, which is the Transportation 2050 Plan, a 35-year comprehensive multimodal transportation plan that will help this city to ensure they were able to maintain our current transportation infrastructure and service needs, but also help to make sure that our future transportation needs are met as well with population growth and the new economy that Phoenix will have in future decades. Transportation 2050 is about providing our community with many types of transportation options. When it comes to streets, the funding will bolster existing streets funding, which allows us to cut the existing arterial street maintenance cycle in half, from about 65 years to 33 years. Bicycling continues to become more and more important to Phoenix, and this plan will add, over the 35-year period, about 1,000 miles of bike lanes in Phoenix. Many residents depend on public transit to get to work, to get to school, to get to doctor appointments, to get to dialysis treatments. Bus hours and frequency are going to be expanded under the Transportation 2050 Plan. Dial-a-rite hours will be expanded under the plan. Phoenix residents, businesses, workers, and visitors all depend on transportation services and infrastructure, and Transportation 2050 will help meet those needs. Phoenix residents, as well as surrounding community residents, are using transit to get to Phoenix events. The pre-Super Bowl events in downtown earlier this year were a fantastic demonstration of the interest that people have in using bus and rail to get to the places that they want and need to go. People need streets and transit to get to events like ballgames and zombie walks downtown, Suns games and concerts. These are all part of what makes Phoenix great. Before I turn it over to Ray, and Ed Zirker mentioned this just a minute ago, I want to mention the statement issued by Moody's, which is one of Phoenix's credit rating agencies. Moody's published a report late last week that the voter approval of the transportation plan is credit positive. Moody's recognizes the importance of the fact that the Phoenix community is willing to invest in itself, to invest in its transportation needs. The plan also, and Moody's recognizes this, the plan also frees up resources in the general fund that will allow us to address other needs, like in public safety, which the Chief Yana is going to be talking to you about later this afternoon. So Mayor and members of the council, the Phoenix Transportation 2050 Plan means that we've got a lot of work to do, and we've got to do so in a way that provides the best service at the lowest cost as soon as we can to the Phoenix community, and this city is ready to take that next step. With that, I'll turn it over to Ray DeValena.
Thank you, Mario. City Council and Mayor and City Council, the biggest effort right now is that we get over 20,000 calls of potholes across the city. That's a big emphasis in looking at what our pavement management we have right now. We have over 65 years of our maintenance cycle, so we're looking at trying to address that quickly. I show a picture of a tire there. One of the issues that we're having right now, and it's been reported nationally, is that people are, the average person is spending more than $500 a year just in vehicle maintenance because of road use, or road use and the lack of maintenance on roads. This picture shows some of the things that we're using to address that and how we're going to be addressing our pavement cycle. We have a vehicle pavement management software and vehicle that addresses how we look at our streets and how we measure our streets. You see there that two individuals are city staff that are using our vehicle every day to measure our stresses of our streets, as well as the inside of that, the right-hand side picture shows the insides of that vehicle, and just shows what we would be looking at in trying to address and analyze the streets, as well as what treatments we would be looking at for our pavement. at for our pavement. Looking at, starting next year, we're actually looking at about 37 miles, a little bit over 37 miles of pavement preservation across the city, and as well as about 39 miles of bike lanes across the city. This is in addition to what Mario said. It'll bolster our existing program that we have across the city with the existing funding that we have. And so, and just in talking about streets, streets is not just about moving vehicles, it's about connecting people, connecting people to transit, connecting people to places. And our goal is to make sure that we're looking at that and how we are addressing that across the city, as well as reducing, mainly reducing our pavement cycle across the whole city down to 33 years, as well as on our major streets, and as well as reducing our local streets and collector streets down to a 50-year cycle. So with that, I'm going to pass it along to Albert Santana, who's going to talk about public transit and the light rail components.
Thank you, Ray. Members, member of the council, just one thing that I'd like to open with is how this is a very big moment, a very exciting time for transportation, specifically in this case, the City of Phoenix. From the moment that the voters did approve the Phoenix Transportation 2050, getting calls from colleagues in states in Colorado and in California and Nevada saying that this is not just a Phoenix thing, this really puts Phoenix on the national map when it comes to transportation and the future of that. The one thing that we know is that ultimately, transportation, and for all of the parts of this organization that we work with in the City of Phoenix, ultimately, the things that we work on, the services we provide are for people. How does it impact the residents of Phoenix? And we know that over the next 20 years, we're going to be welcoming over 700,000 people to Phoenix. And a big part of that draw is how can we effectively move them through transportation and providing them those options. So beginning with the bus elements, what we heard loud and clear as we moved through this process was bus increases to service, bus increases for the hours, as well as the expanding of our routes, especially to areas where we have a lot of growth and projected growth in our city for jobs, and then ultimately, the enhancement of our facilities that we have that support our bus system. As we begin to look at the implementation of our bus elements, looking at the first year and beyond, one of the things we know we need to do immediately is increasing our service hours on bus so that they match with our light rail system. So we will be moving bus operations to be midnight during the week and then matching the late hours for light rail going to 2:00 a.m. on the weekend, so that way people can safely and effectively make those multimodal transit connections. The other part, it's Phoenix, it happens to be this time of year now, so we can easily tell about, it is a little warm here. And with that, as people are waiting for our bus connections to happen, we want to make sure that we provide as much shade as we possibly can. So one of the first things that we were asked by the community is the implementation and the rollout of our bus shelters. The other thing that was mentioned, too, is that as we increase the frequency and as we increase these hours, we obviously need more vehicles. So as a part of the beginning of this, we are going to be procuring up to 21 dial-a-ride vehicles and 108 local city buses. We need to have those facilities, we need to have that infrastructure to be able to match these service improvements that we will be doing. As we move into light rail, we thought this would be an appropriate picture because it's not just about the amount of ridership and the amount of boardings that we have. We talked a little bit about it this morning in subcommittee, specifically with Councilwoman Pastore and Councilman Gates. It's about the customer's experience. Do they feel safe to utilize our facilities? And when we do get their trust for them to ride, how was their experience? And this picture, we thought, serves us well, and they probably are having a better time than most riders, I think. But it does speak to the environment and about bringing people from all different backgrounds, from all different cultures together, and having a little bit of fun while we're along the way. This map here is a map that you all have seen before, and it just speaks to the different areas that we're going to be going out to as a part of our light rail system, as well as our bus rapid transit. As has been said many times throughout this program, is that we're going to be tripling the amount of light rail. And what does that mean in numbers? That's 42 additional miles of light rail, as well as five miles dedicated to some type of a circular in the downtown area, and then adding another, adding 75 miles of bus rapid transit. And when you look at this map, it's not just about trying to figure out where people are going for one aspect or another, but it's connections to major employment, connections to shopping. And last, but definitely not least, the relationship between public transportation and quality education. So connecting to Arizona State University, Grand Canyon University, our community college system, all of that plays a very, very vital role as we expand and start to plan out our high-capacity transit program. And again, these pictures just really try to emphasize that about our connections in the downtown Phoenix area with Arizona State University, also Central High School and different levels of education. And then one of the most critical things is making sure that our transportation system is accessible for people of all different walks of life. So we always are working with our friends in the disability community and making sure that all of our transportation is accessible to everyone. The last thing I'd like to end with is, again, transportation is not just the amount of boardings we have. We know we do very well. Almost over 250,000 people board our transportation between bus and light rail on a daily basis in the Phoenix metro area, which is great. But it's also about what does it have impacts on with economic development? Recently, we celebrated with Mayor and several members of the City Council that we have over $8 billion of economic development along our 20-mile system, which began running in the later part of 2008. And how did we get there? We are always working to have a lot of effective outreach and assisting our businesses as we move these projects forward. And I'll pass to Maria on the transportation advocacy. As we move this program forward, it is critical that we have a close relationship with our citizens and our commissions to make sure that we are effectively implementing the program.
So Mayor and Council, what you've heard is a whole lot of excitement and a whole lot of plans. And these were all put together in the Transportation 2050, or as we originally called it, the Proposition 104. But now comes the next step, and it's really meeting what our community is expecting from us. They gave us a whole lot of trust in approving this transportation plan for the next 35 years. And what we need to do is we need to meet their expectations. We need to make sure that we're transparent, that we are providing that oversight. And it's not just staff. It really is all about the citizens feeling very comfortable with what we are doing. And one of the pieces that is very critical to talk about now is the New Citizens Transportation Commission. This was included in the ballot language, just like it was in our original Transit 2000 Plan that started, really started our transit system. So in our Transportation 2050, we have a new combined transit and transportation subcommittee we call the Citizens Transportation Commission. And this is all because I don't want to have to remember a new acronym. I like the CTC part that I've had for quite a few years. So one of the things that we need to do, and one we're presenting to you today, is the formation of that Citizens Transit Commission, Transportation Commission. And what they will be doing is they will provide input to each one of you on revenues, expenditures, and projections that we receive from our Transportation 2050 program. But as I mentioned, transparency is absolutely critical. One of the things that we believe we need to bring to this new commission as quickly as possible are measures, metrics and measured performance measures, things that we believe as transit and transportation professionals are absolutely critical. We want to discuss them with the Citizens Transportation Commission, get their input, and make sure that we're providing that back on our website and back in any way we can, back to our community, so at any given time, they can see where we are in implementing the program. The membership structure that's proposed is very similar to what we had with the Citizens Transit Commission. But we've also looked at the, oh, gosh, my goodness, I'm so sorry that I forgot, the STACK, the Surface Transportation Advisory Committee. Even though that group is inactive, we wanted to look at what elements needed to be included from the transportation side into the transit side. So this combined committee includes, just like we had with the Citizens Transit Commission, accounts, or each one of you will appoint a representative. We also include persons with disabilities, with business, and at-large folks that we had on the Citizens Transit Commission. But recognizing the combined function with the transportation, we've also added in education because, as Albert talked about it, connecting to our universities, to our colleges, to our high schools, to our elementary schools is a critical component of our transportation. And recognizing that and having a member being on this commission is critical, as well as to a business person, too, representing the business community. And of course, I couldn't stop without talking about a transit user because that is important to bring to the table also. Building our future is what this all is about. And what this says is we are going to be branding this. So again, just like our performance measures and our metrics, we want to make sure that our community knows that what we're building, what we are adding to our system through their approval is through building our future. And so you will see this sign many times as we implement everything we do in the future. So in closing, we are asking your approval today for formation of the new Citizens Transportation Commission. You will see this again on the formal meeting of September 30th, but what we're hoping is that with your approval or any questions that you may have, that we can get this body gathered as quickly as possible because, as you heard from everybody else, we have a lot to do, and we want to be able to accomplish it with this oversight.
Mayor, I just have one thing to add. The tax begins January 1st as the effective date of the new tax. And so a lot of these projects, we want to get moving forward and working on those even before then. And so part of what we're asking here today is to get this commission in place and appointed and moving forward in reviewing all of these projects and the work that's going to be coming to them over the next few months to get ready even before January begins. We'll be working with the commission to review. One of the things that we're going to have them review is the Maricopa Association of Governments Regional Transportation Plan, which contains all of the light rail alignments that have been out there under the current funding that's in place. The schedules that are there are based on the current funding in place and did not take into account Transportation 2050. So those need to be reviewed in light of developments with T-2050, in light of the interest in moving forward with South Central and light rail alignment along South Central, as well as other projects that are going to be brought forward to them. So just wanted to mention that, Mayor and Council, and thank you again for your time. And we're open to any questions you have.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm sure there'll be questions from members of this council. Councilman Gates, did you have a question first, and I'll turn it over to the member to see if they want to make a motion, and then we can take additional comments as well. Councilman Gates?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, you're starting in absolutely the right place, which is the Citizens Transportation Commission. I mean, this is extremely important. It's mentioned in the proposition. This is really going to set the table, so it's very important that we do this right. And so I just had a couple of questions. Under the CTC, the currently existing CTC, all the members have to be residents of the City of Phoenix. Now, this proposal that's been presented to us today, it says that up to four members may be residents outside of the City of Phoenix, as long as they're from within Maricopa County. Maybe you can comment on why that was included, whereas now they're all residents of the city?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, one of the factors that we considered was really about the folks, the additional folks that were added, and I'm just going to back up. Some of our transportation experts, some of our at-large folks who are very familiar with our transportation system, they may come from outside of Phoenix. And we didn't want to limit your ability to bring those folks in, as well as their expertise. It was just a thought that it might make it easier for you to identify the right folks for this group.
Okay. I appreciate that. I mean, for me, this is a citizens group. You know, we have over 1.4 million people in the City of Phoenix, a lot of talented people, but that's just my thought on that, so I'm curious where, what your thought was there. And then also, looking at the Prop 104 itself, just, I was looking for some clarification. Within Prop 104, it says, "To advance transparency, public input, and government accountability, all expenditures under this plan shall be reviewed by a Citizens Transportation Committee." What's that going to look like, or what suggestions do you have to the council as to what that means? Because that could mean a lot of different things, could mean a lot of very micromanaging, quite frankly, by this group, or, you know, they could be taking a 30,000-foot level. Maybe advise us as to how you think this council ought to interpret that language?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, yes, thank you for that question. And I think, you know, in a lot of ways, we expect that because this was modeled, the language that's in place was modeled after the Citizens Transit Commission that's in place now. We expect a lot of that to work very much the same way. So it'll be a review of those expenditures annually at a high level. The recommendations are going to be to the City Council, but ultimately, these are still City Council decisions that are coming through. And so Maria, I don't know if you would have anything to add about the functioning of that, of the current commission?
Thank you, Mario. Councilman Gates, currently, the items that we take to the Citizens Transit Commission, just like we take to Mayor and Council, so we provide our revenue projections, we provide our budget, what we anticipate spending for the year, et cetera. So those are the types of things we take to them for their review. Other things that we take for them are programs. So for instance, we would take Northwest Extension. We've provided them with updates throughout the process, the costs, et cetera. They don't necessarily approve every single contract, but they do provide input over how the money is being spent, in alignment with the ballot item that said they're reviewing the expenditures, the projections, and expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilwoman?
Thank you so much. Thank you for getting this moving so quickly. It's exciting to have this before us, just two weeks after the vote, so we appreciate more long hours, even though we had to put in many long hours to get the plan to voters and to answer the many questions. So appreciate your hard work on this. I think this will be a game changer for the City of Phoenix, and our vote today will really get us moving towards one of the most important processes we will engage in in our time on the city. Transportation is so important to people, getting to work, to doctors, to school, and it really is an essential part of living and one of our key roles as municipal government. So thank you for your attention to this. I'm very glad that we've decided to highlight the education community with a specific slot. I think that's important because so many of our users are students, and they have different schedules than many other users and different needs, and so it's important that they have a specific seat at the table. But you could say that about any one of these constituencies, and I think we will want this commission to have as many diverse perspectives as possible. We will want young people and seniors, we will want people in the business community from the convention side to people on the retail side, like the many malls that are on this. So in order to have as much flexibility as possible, I just wanted to confirm, and the way I read it, that this is true. If, let's say, I were to appoint, or a council district were to appoint someone with a professional transportation background, and another council member were to appoint a representative from the community of people with disabilities, could that in effect create more at-large positions so that we could even allow a more diverse commission?
Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, the way it's been structured, as proposed, is that the seats that are assigned to specific representatives are distinct from the council district appointments. The council district could appoint an additional education expert or an additional business community expert, but the seat that's assigned to each of those specific slots would still stand.
Okay. Well, I think that's something we might consider if additional flexibility is necessary. I do like the flexibility to have residents outside of the City of Phoenix. I think particularly, like on the education side, if we were to have someone from Arizona State University who is their transportation person, or someone from Phoenix Union District who is their transportation expert, but that individual did not live within the city, they might still be a great addition. So I do think there is some value in allowing folks outside of our city, although we do have 1.4 million great residents. I certainly agree with Councilman Gates that we have great expertise, but we hope this will be in place for quite a while, and to give ourselves flexibility is wise, in my opinion. And just, could you speak a little bit about the sunset of the existing Citizens Transit Commission, when that would happen, and if we need to take a specific vote on that as well?
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, as Maria mentioned, the current Citizens Transit Commission was set in place with the current T-2000 funding, when that was approved by voters back in 2000, and has been in place. They've been doing an excellent job. But that tax will expire and be replaced as of January 1st, and as a result, the current Oversight Commission will need to be sunset as of December 31st, 2015. So what we will be bringing back to the council in the ordinance to set up the new commission later this month is an action that goes along with that to sunset the existing commission.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, I'd also just mention, we're spending quite a bit of time today on the Citizens Transportation Commission because it is really sort of the first step in getting forward to you and the community, the order in which programs are going to go. Each one of these programs has its own speed. You know, bus service-
You know, bus service can be done relatively quickly, however, there's a couple times a year when you can implement new bus service in the spring and in the fall. Streets are a little quicker. Light rail has a much longer lead time. But all these things are going to have to be taken through and vetted with the Transportation Commission this fall, so that by January, they're ready to go. So I would expect that specifics about where the streets are going to be paved and what's going to happen with bus service is something that will ramp up through the Transportation Commission, come to the Transportation Subcommittee, and come back here. So where will the 39 miles of bike lanes be? Where will the 37 miles of overlay? How are we going to work with MAG on making sure South Central is recognized now with its new funding source to move up in the regional priorities? All those things will flow through the Transportation Commission to this body, and we'll be working on that this fall, so that before the holiday break, that there's an entire package that that group has had a chance to look at.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Williams?
I was going to go ahead and make a motion.
Let's throw a motion on there, see if there's a second, then we take any questions, obviously, if they're from.
I'm going to go ahead and move that the council accept this, but also send it back for some further clarification and maybe some amendments. For instance, on the B, commission memberships, I personally would like to see that limited to two people outside Phoenix, because I think Councilwoman Gallego made a great point. There's some expertise that may be out there that we want, but I also think this is a city of Phoenix commission, and it should be primarily city of Phoenix. On the powers and duties, on B, I am assuming, and I want clarification, is when you say they can establish committees and subcommittees, are you talking about within their own membership? You're not talking about them being able to go out and appoint new members to subcommittees, are you?
That's correct, Mayor, and Councilwoman Williams. Within their own membership, within their own body, they would be able to establish subcommittees and committees.
Okay. So you would add something that clarifies that, makes that, so that there's no question about in the future?
Sure. We can add that language.
And then on the last point, on H, I think, Ed, you just did a good job, but I would like it a little more explained in H, that there is a flow, and that some of the priorities have been established, and that funding sources have been named, and they don't have to start from square one on some of these things. Because I feel real strongly, Mayor, that, you know, this commission has an extremely important role to play, and we're putting a lot of faith in their ability and their sincerity to really make this city move ahead. But when the bottom line comes, if people see that this dais, it has to go back out to the constituents and say, this is why this is being done this way, and it needs to come through a flow, make recommendations, but I still believe very strongly, this body has to be the final word. So with that, that's my motion.
Okay. The motion is to accept staff recommendation with the amendment that there would only be up to two members of the Citizens Transit Commission that could live outside the city of Phoenix, that it would be clear that any subcommittees would be made up only of members of the Citizen Transit Commission, and then finally, the amendment would be just, I think it's more of a friendly amendment, to make it clear that any final decisions have to come before this city council, that they're going to review, question, oversight, but ultimately, decisions on spending of any money comes before this body. I hope I fairly clarified or fairly described the motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a second. Councilman Gates, you have questions?
Yeah, just had a friendly amendment for the maker of the motion. Just to clarify, I believe this is the intent, but on B-1A, so right now, it says, "Commission members shall be appointed from one from each council district." But just to clarify, that that's actually each member of the council will have, it's not that, you know, someone, the mayor or someone else picks someone from each district, but it's actually the appointment of the council member. Each one of us has a representative on this commission. Is that your understanding?
I think the good faith belief was that most members of this council would choose someone from your district to serve on this committee, so that we have geographical diversity, along with other forms of diversity on this committee. But I think that was important, that we have representatives from, representing all parts of the city.
But Mayor, my question is that it's the council member, because it doesn't actually say that.
Correct.
It just says, "They shall be appointed from each district." But I'm just clarifying that it's actually that we, as council members, will make the choice, as opposed to like a committee decision or something.
Well, it'll have to be voted on by this full council, so every recommendation will have to go before this full body. But yes, the recommendation that you make, it sounds like your request is to make it clear that the recommendation doesn't necessarily have to come from the close to 200,000 highly-qualified individuals in District 3.
I'm not doing a good job of explaining this, Mayor. That's essentially a separate issue. Yeah.
I get your point. If that is the will of the council, to clarify that.
Yes.
And of course, the maker of the motion is okay with it, then we should make that clear. Okay.
Thank you.
So the question is, and it's one recommendation from each council representative, and you can make a choice whether you have the talent within your district to choose from. Councilwoman Pastore?
I'm reading this, and I want some clarity on terms, and who, how are terms decided, and who chooses which term your appointee goes to? And why is it staggered?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore, the reason we staggered those is so that when the, as the terms end, so that the turnover would not be all at once, so that as we initially start those terms, and as those terms end, so that the turnover of the commission would not occur all at the same time, to give some stability, some continuity to that body as they move forward and progress through their work. So that's the intent of staggering those terms, and setting up the initial one-year, two-year, and three-year terms. And then the other part of your question was, where does that come from? And that's, again, it's, the current process that we, that's in place, is that the mayor's office makes that recommendation that's approved by the city council.
Okay. So then my question is, then, who determines what committee person lies in that term? Because I will, you know, I'm just talking, looking at myself and saying, okay, District 4, I chose this person. I want to appoint him for three years. And then I'm told, who tells me no?
Well, obviously, that would be a recommendation from my office to put on an agenda that we would all vote on. So it would be a vote of this council that would ultimately make that determination.
So, okay.
Someone's got to make a recommendation, and obviously, any recommendation is, just like any member of Board or Commission, is voted on by this full body.
No, I know, but what I'm asking is, who determines where these members go in what term, lies in what term?
Again...
Initially.
Unless you have a different way of going about it, I would make that recommendation, and then we would vote on it as a council. Obviously, if people disagree with that, we can vote it down and then move forward in a different direction.
Okay.
Councilwoman Warren?
So I had, before this meeting, I had asked a couple of questions about this. I thought I got definitive answers. Now I feel like I'm hearing something slightly different. So I had asked, I think we had clarified to my satisfaction, it'll be the council member will make a recommendation to the council, so, but I appreciate Councilman Gates clarifying that a little bit. But I had asked, well, as the representative then who's picking someone, so for the village planning committees, I think the way it's been, is you either have to live in the district or you could work in the district. I was told this was different, this was only going to be, and then there's a, one of the tourism boards, I think it's your facility has to be in the district. So there's been a couple different interpretations for different committees. This one, I was told you would have to live in the district, which is fine, I'm sure I'll pick somebody who actually lives in District 2. But the mayor made it sound like maybe you didn't have to live in District 2. So do you or don't you? And I don't want to interpret, I just, I heard what you said, and I was...
I think it was ambiguous previous to Councilman Gates' clarification. It was Councilman Gates who suggested that...
Because they told me it was definitive before, in a separate meeting. So, okay, so we're, now I guess we're tightening that up. I do have, I'll just say, I have an issue with people being outside the city of Phoenix. I think we're cutting that down from four to two now.
That was the motion by Councilwoman...
Or we voted for this.
Correct.
I still just find that curious. We have a city of well over a million people, and it just seems like we should be able to fill this many spots with Phoenix residents who are experts. I would also have a concern, maybe we, I mean, do they have to live in Arizona? Does it say that anywhere? I didn't see that anywhere, but I guess I'd be a little concerned, we'd now be bringing in people from outside Arizona. I just want to kind of know what the rules of the game are before I actually start picking someone.
Obviously, you'll have an opportunity, any recommendation by any member of this council or from myself would come before this body, and obviously, would clarify their city, and I guess now state of residence in advance. You have the opportunity to know that before voting on any individual person.
Mayor, Councilman Warren, the language that's currently in there for the four exemptions from city of Phoenix says that they would still need to be residents of Maricopa County.
So it's Maricopa County?
Yes.
Is the issue? Even though it doesn't say Arizona. Okay, fine. All right. I do, I am a little bit torn, because I do feel like, I don't know, if I was a citizen hearing about this, and I either wanted to be on it or something, and I saw somebody from, not to pick on anybody, Scottsdale, Tempe, something else, I guess I'd have an issue with that. Okay. I guess we're cutting down on that, so I suppose that's good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Deese, yeah?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I want to make sure there is some clarity, that all the council members are going to be treated exactly the same, because we all have diverse opinions. I want to make sure that the diverse opinion is also reflected in the committee. And I know that there was some issues with the, or there was an issue with the fact of the staggered terms. Now, every, I want to make sure I understand this. Every council member will be able to choose their choice, correct, of a person to be nominated at the council?
They'll be nominated, it'll be voted on by the council, but of course, you'll be able to pick who you want to nominate, of course.
And that they will all serve the equal amount of time? Is that correct?
I think under this strategy, under staggered terms, that would not necessarily be correct. It would be close, but it wouldn't necessarily be correct. However, when that person was completed with his or her term, whoever the council member sitting in that seat at the time would have the opportunity to make a recommendation on a subsequent appointment.
Who picks the staggered, and who gets the short end of the stick, and who gets the biggest part of the stick?
We'll be voting on that as a council. It will be clear at the time we vote on it, for a, I guess it's a three-year term or a two-year term to start out with, in order to create the staggered terms. That would be something voted on by this city council.
Mayor, if I could just make one clarification on the staggered terms. So there are, there's a total of 15 members in the proposed language. Five would be set up for a one-year term, five would be set up for two-year terms, and then the remaining five would have three-year terms. One clarification I would make is on the term limits. There are term limits that are put in place as well for two full three-year terms. So because those are the full three-year terms that are limited, those one-year and two-year term appointments would not count against the term limit. So actually, in those cases, they would actually have the ability to serve longer than the six years that's in place.
Is that the will of the maker of the motion? Councilwoman Williams? Have you had a chance to hear that explanation? Councilwoman Williams? I don't have a chance to hear that explanation, that it thought was, if someone gets appointed to a one- or a two-year term, what Mario Paniagua was suggesting is that they would be eligible then for two additional three-year terms, so that those that got the shorter terms to start out with, quote-unquote, would end up theoretically being allowed to serve for a longer period of time. Is that what you would like, or would you say, if you get a one-year term, and you get reappointed for a three-year term, and then your term of service is done?
I think that's probably a better idea, and I think to help solve the problem on who gets what, why don't we just have a lottery? You draw, number each one of these positions, draw them out, and that's how we figure out which term they get.
Mayor, I have a suggestion.
Okay, real quick, the question really was, did you want to amend your motion? It's, I think it was a friendly amendment in terms of the terms being staggered, whether or not you could serve more than six years, or would the term that you start out with count as a full term, and you only get one three-year second term?
It would be a maximum for everyone for three years.
No, maximum, you, under the current proposal, you would serve up to a three-year term, and you'd be eligible for one second term of three years.
So you could have six years.
Well, but Mario was suggesting is that unless we clarify, if, for example, you get appointed to a two-year term to start out with, you'd be eligible, that would not count against you in terms of your service, and so you'd be eligible for an additional six years, for a total of potentially eight years.
I think that's too long for any one committee member.
So you're suggesting that any term of service would count as a term, and then they would be eligible for one three-year extension?
I think that's more reasonable.
Okay. So that's what the maker of the motion, does the second agree to that?
I guess, eight seems like a reasonable term to me, but I'm okay with it, because we don't want to be voting on...
Why not?
Get clarity on that.
Of course.
So the max of a three-year term is six years.
Two, three-year terms maximum would result in six years.
So could it possibly be like the one-year term and the two-year terms be the max of six years? Say they get, keep getting reappointed to the, and then they max out at six? Because the way I'm calculating it, I go in a two-year term, I stay for, say, get renewed another time, so that's four, then I'm allowed to go on, now I'm appointed for the three-year term, so three more years is seven, and then another three is 10, so I end up serving 10 years.
Oh, I see. One clarification is just, only the initial terms would have the one-year and the two-year term appointments. So after that, every subsequent appointment would be for the three-year period.
Oh.
That's a creates a staggering effect, yeah, yeah.
Now it makes sense.
It's sort of like when this city council went from two-year to four-year terms, some people got two years and had to run for, like, some people got four years, but you just, if you're going to have staggered terms, you got to start somewhere. Okay. So Councilwoman Williams' recommendation was, the first term, whether it be one, two, or three years counts as one term, you'd be eligible for one more three-year term, and then you're capped out, and then we'd have new people be able to join this commission, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Gallego. Councilman Gates?
So just a clarification, if that's the case, under B-3, the way that B-3 reads, if someone takes part of an unexpired term, so let's say they just, someone drops off, and then they move in, and let's say they just serve a year or two, that's not counted against them, so they can still go on to have two three-year terms. So then that would be inconsistent with this. So either, I would recommend, we either need to change this, or change the amendment that was just made, to make them consistent.
Okay. So do we want to make it where any portion of a term counts as a term, and you're eligible for one additional three-year term, regardless of where you start? Or do you want people up to, I guess they could serve up to eight years otherwise, if we think that's too long? Councilwoman Williams, I think, thought it was, eight years would be a little too long to serve on this commission for one single person. So Councilwoman Williams, I'm really looking to you for, your thought is, is that any portion of a term would count as one term, or does he have to serve a full three years to count as a term?
Having been in this position before on some of these committees, if you're coming in on just the tail end, it doesn't seem right, but if you're coming in on the beginning of somebody's term, it's different. So I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think it just comes up that you can have a total of, what, eight years?
Okay. So then we'll leave the current, if that's your choice, then we'll leave the current language, which would allow up to eight years, that if you serve less than three-year term, that does not count as a term for purposes of term limits. If that's your preference, then that'd be the motion, and then see if the second agrees, and then we'll go from there, which is what the staff was originally thinking. Okay. Second agrees that?
We withdrew the most recent amendment.
That's correct.
Which I think is wise.
Okay. Councilman Warren?
So, so for city council, a partial term does not count towards the term limit. Are we saying that for this, this is going to be the same now, after much back and forth? Is that, is that correct?
That's what Councilwoman Williams just recommended, right.
Fantastic. I'm not sure what the magic was with three years and staggered terms. I think this has been overthought. Probably should have just made it, everybody has a two-year term, and we can decide to renew. The way it works, again, in the village, maybe it wasn't intended this way, is if you don't actively remove someone... The way it works again in the village, maybe it wasn't intended this way, is if you don't actively remove someone and their term expires and you haven't reappointed them, they just stay. So I'm not sure why we couldn't do that. If we're happy with their work, there's no reason to reappoint. Maybe two, two-year terms or something to address Councilwoman Williams' issue with the length of the term. It just seems like we, I mean, all the back and forth about this, it just seems like it should be needlessly complicated. I would feel more comfortable with all Phoenix residents serving two or three two-year, I mean, three two-year terms would be six years, which is less than eight. You can reappoint them a couple of times. If you're happy with their service, there's no need to reappoint them. They can just stay for the whole six years. Simple, easy to understand. That also takes care of the people dropping off and staggered and so forth. There will be no shortage of people, I imagine, calling offices wanting to be on this. So it's not like we're going to have vacancies as we do on some other committees. But it's just a thought. It just seems like it's getting a little bit complicated where it needn't be.
All right. Councilman DeCecio, do you have additional questions? I apologize.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I did, well, more of a comment. I mean, it just seems to me it's more logical that it's fair across the board where everybody gets a three-year term. I mean, this whole thing for it being staggered just seems like it's way overcomplicating it like Jim was just talking about. Because it doesn't, you're not going to get that much turnover at one time. It just isn't going to happen that way. It hasn't happened at the villages. It hasn't happened here. I've never seen that occur. So I think it overcomplicates it and also sets up another narrative that you may not want to see that looks unfair to some individuals. Overall, I'm going to be supportive of this. You know, I strongly did not support the initiative, but the voters spoke. And I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that it's successful, fiscally accountable and successful in that respect. So I will be working toward that goal as much as I really think that this wasn't a good idea. But it is something that now the voters have told me what they want and that's what I have to do. And I will do it to the best of my ability to make sure it's done right. But I do believe that this does definitely needs to be fixed here unless you want to create another narrative out there of being unfair. And I don't think you want to do that, especially when you have a huge win.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Any additional comments by members of this, of this council? I personally think this is the right way to start. Make sure we put the citizen committee in place to make sure that we are staying true to what we committed to the voters and put on the ballot. It was also excellent news that Moody said that this transportation initiative, overwhelmingly supported by the people of Phoenix, does set us in the right direction relative to our credit position moving forward. It's a very fiscally well-run city. And I think Moody reaffirms that with the report that they recently put out. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Keep working hard. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is item number three, which is a police officer hiring status report. Periodically, Chief Yonner's team have come before the city council and discussed with the support of the city council, the police hiring plan. Of note, with the successful passage of Proposition 104, on an annualized basis, approximately $16 million from the general fund was used to support transportation with 104. We will not need to use those $16 million to support transportation because now there is a dedicated funding source for transportation. This council had discussed this issue in advance of the election, said that our highest priority was hiring new officers. Now that 104 has come to pass, our police chief here is really to talk about hiring a lot more police officers to protect the citizens of the city of Phoenix. And that's what's on the agenda for item number three, the police officer hiring status report. And I think our assistant city manager is going to kick it off, Milton DeHoney.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We're delighted to be here to bring more specificity to the hiring plans that we have for going in the future. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Chief Yonner, who will walk us through the presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, first of all, thank you for your support. It's been a long time coming. Up until a couple of months ago, our last academy class that graduated from the Phoenix Police Academy was April of 2009. So recently in July, and Mayor, thank you for attending, we graduated some recruits and then just last Friday, we graduated some recruits as well. So we're very excited about starting to hire again and it's a lot of momentum within the police department. Earlier this year, you gave us approval to start hiring. I mentioned we've had some graduations. But with the addition of Prop 104 and the additional $16 million, that equates to 125 more police officers. So the original hiring plan, which I'll show you in a second, had an ample number of police officers stretch over about a four-year period. With the additional 125, it really, really helps us this fiscal year to get us back in the hiring mode. We lose about four officers per year or per month in attrition. And just from our drop, which is a retirement program, we lose in 2015, we lose 55 and in 2016, we lose 86. So the additional 125 is huge for us as we start rebuilding the police department. As you can see by the slide, the first column is the original hiring plan that you approved earlier this year and that's for this fiscal year, fiscal year 1516. So it's 143 officers for this year and then with the additional 125, we're up to 270 officers roughly, which again is very ambitious for us. We have ramped our training academy up. We have 11 background investigators. I have met with Lyle Mann at a post and we have slots in all the academy classes. So we are very much looking forward to hiring 270 police officers in this fiscal year. And again, we couldn't do it without your support. To be a police officer is not easy. There's an eight-step hiring process. It starts with online application. There's a written test. It's basically a general knowledge, civil service type exam, physical agility test, which is specified by age and gender, background investigation, polygraph, medical and on and on. Once hired, it's a rigorous, before we go to hiring, some of the things that we lose candidates or applicants on are drug standards. Now, the Phoenix Police Department's drug standards are the same as Arizona Post. They're the same as agencies in our surrounding community. Employment history. Unfortunately, we have people that fudge their employment history. Criminal history. Convicted of a misdemeanor within three years, you won't be able to get hired. Traffic history, a DUI within the last three years. Those are just some of the things that are common disqualifiers for our applicants. As far as, once you're through the hiring process, it's roughly 40 weeks of training, almost 10 months. And it starts with a 20-week academy class training where we focus on academics, criminal law, traffic law. We focus on fitness. We focus on firearms, arrest tactics. It's a very rigorous 20 weeks of training. And then the recruits go to three weeks of post-academy, which is specific to Phoenix PD. The training academy is a regional academy, so when you attended the graduation and Councilwoman Pastor, thank you for attending last Friday, you see all the recruits. The three-week post-academy is just Phoenix policies. So we hone them in further on Phoenix PD and the culture of our organization. And then after that, they go to 16 weeks with an FTO, which is a field training officer. And all that is done prior to the officer going solo and going to his or her first radio call. And again, that's about 10 months of training. We've got a very diverse recruitment team and they are in the audience and I'll introduce them to you. We have Sergeant Troy Hallen, if you please stand up, Troy. Officer Tu Fan, Officer Julio Gardenias and Officer Chris McLeod. And their assistant chief is Assistant Chief Mike Kurtenbach. There's several others of our team that are not here today because they're out recruiting for future Phoenix police officers. They're doing a great job. The last test we did in August, we do tests every week, or every month, the written tests. The last test we did, we had 178 applicants complete the test. So there is a pool out there and we are looking for the best candidates we possibly can get. This is who we've hired. Now, the top, the top table is 88 people that we have hired and their ethnicity. And the bottom table is currently the Phoenix PD. So when you look at that, some things to point out. Currently, we're at about 15.3% Hispanic. We've hired 34.1% Hispanic. Currently, we're at about 12.7% female. Industry standard for most police agencies is about 14% female and we are currently hiring about 20% female. So things are moving in the right direction. We will continue to hire a diverse recruit pool and our recruitment team is doing a great job in that regard. I know I went quick. Your last presentation was rather long, so if there's any questions I could answer for you, I'd be happy to do that.
Mayor?
Councilwoman, please.
I have a quick question for you. I know it's not just as simple as hiring those. You didn't have to begin to promote people because you've got to have new sergeants and lieutenants and so forth and you have to train them. When does that process start?
We promote all the time. We have promotion lists that are active right now. And actually, the hiring, the way we're set up in patrol, we have to have so many sergeants because we have to have supervisors of each squad. So I've been promoting with a support of city management for, since I've been chief. I promote a commander and two lieutenants on Monday. So the promotion is all part of the process. Is that what your question is?
Partly. And I know that you've also had a shortage on some of your squads. So I would take it, maybe that sergeant would just have the squad expanded. Am I saying it right? I'm not sure.
No.
So it would have a larger number, so you didn't, pardon me, actually have to have all new sergeants or additional. You've got a puzzled look. I must not be saying it right.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams?
I'm trying to figure out how to get all these new recruits, these new officers in, under good, solid supervision that has some experience.
We've got a great plan and we've ramped up our FTO sergeants. So we did a selection process to have FTO sergeants selected from throughout the city. They go through a competitive process because we want the best sergeants supervising our new people as they come out. So the FTO sergeants, and we have them in three different precincts, they will get the new recruits coming out of the academy. They are, at this time, they're dedicated just to FTO training and training those recruits. As we move on, we'll expand those and those FTO sergeants will have dual responsibilities of recruits coming in to be trained as well as supervision of existing personnel.
Thank you. Just don't tell my son I forgot about saying FTO.
I won't.
He'll kill me.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for members of this, of this council? Maybe Chief, you can talk a little about your philosophy relative to hiring new recruits versus recruits, or, excuse me, existing police officers in other agencies that might want to join the Phoenix Police Department.
We want to recruit from our community and that's where we're focused. We would like new recruits that come from the city of Phoenix. We want to stay home-based. Now, we've been to other places and we're going to continue to do that a little bit. We want to recruit from here. Laterals, because Phoenix Police and the city of Phoenix is such a good place to work and it really is, I don't say that facetiously. It is good in law enforcement and we have a great reputation. So we get a lot of laterals that want to come over and work for us. And I think we've hired, I think it's seven so far. It might be a little less than that. But if we get a qualified applicant that's already Arizona Post certified and ready to hit the street with minimal amount of training, we welcome that as well.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Other questions, comments? Councilman DeCecio?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for presenting today. Now, those are percentages. Can you relay those to people? So all I see are percentages up there. How many people do they represent?
I could, but the top, the top represents 88 people. Those are the 88 people we have hired thus far. The bottom represents 2,697 that we currently have.
Okay, so that's what, okay, I got it then. So that's the 88 that you've hired so far?
Yes.
And?
And we're trying to keep track of that as we go forward so we can try to meet some goals.
I think it's fantastic. I like your numbers up there. I think you're moving in the right direction without a doubt. And bringing up, what Councilwoman Williams was talking about with the promotion end of it, unless you're getting bodies coming in, it's so hard to really promote people because they end up getting, you know, they get stuck in a position. And generally, people like to, they have the ability to be able to be promoted up. So I think that's very positive. And the fact that you did talk about that, that they are going to be promoted, people want to see that. People want to feel like they can move up in their careers. The other is, when you do get on a pace of hiring individuals, there's always that discussion of lowering standards. Just want to hear from you that you're not going to do that.
We will not.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear. Thank you. And then the other is, the final is, we've hired 88 from when? Beginning of this year or from when?
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
No, beginning of this calendar year.
This calendar, January 1.
Yes, because you approved hiring prior to, at the beginning of this year, under the public safety balancing plan.
Okay, and so as of January, we've hired 88, correct?
Yes.
And then in the attrition, because that's always the discussion dealing with attrition, where are we at with that?
Well, we lose about four a month in attrition.
And that drop and everything is four a month?
Well, drop in 2015, we lose 55.
Okay.
In 2016, we lose, and I had it on my slides earlier, about 86. And then 2017, we lose 44. Those--
All in is what I'm looking for. Thanks, Ed.
When you're saying attrition, you mean those who leave not because of retirement or drop, they just for other reasons? I think the councilmen might be talking about all in together, so retirement and leaving.
I was going to get there, but thank you for doing that, Ed.
Sounds like it's more like eight to 10 a month, Chief, something in that range?
Or 100 a year. If we have 55 in drop and we lose 48 in attrition, roughly, it's 100 a year.
And I know we can't make up that quickly for the attrition we've had in the past. When I talk about attrition, I'm talking about all, all in. So it's going to be hard to make that up. Where will we be at the end of this year? Predicting, I know you can't be exact on that. If we've hired 88 so far and then by the time the end of the year is, how many more do you expect to have before the end of the year, hired on?
Hired on? I have that. I don't have that with me.
Okay. That's all right. You can let me know later. We don't, we're not voting on it, just something to think about. So I just want to make sure at least this year, we've caught up with the attrition, at the very least. Then the next question would be, not that you have to answer it today, but how do we get ahead of the game now? You know, the first thing you got to do is always catch up. And we haven't caught up with all the officer retirements, attrition, whatever else you want to call it, of the past. But how do we, you know, how do you predict us moving forward and how do we catch up with the number that we have to have as a police department?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, just before the chief gets there, just, so the bigger context here has been the roughly--
And I'm glad you're going in this direction. Believe me, I'm happy for you on that.
Roughly a five-year plan this council laid forth to balance the public safety funds, which meant we had to have attrition in order to be in balance. At the end of this fiscal year, by June 30th of 2016, we should be right at balance now with the police funds, which means then we can get back on a regular hiring process through the public safety funds. This represents coming back into that plus the extra 125. So we'll get a full report on where that puts us in terms of numbers, but it's changing all the time because we have to continue to balance the public safety special tax funds.
And thank you for bringing that out, Ed. And, you know, it's always good to talk about what we're hiring, but you always got to look at the other side of the sheet too. You know, where are we losing? And I want to make sure that we're on the positive end of it every year moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll take a card. Now I know there are probably other members of the council who want to ask questions or make comments. The first card is from Will Bouvetas, representing Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, followed by Day Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm Will Bouvetas. I'm a proud Phoenix police officer. More importantly, I have the honor of representing the 2,500 highly-trained cops we have in the city, or I guess 2,694, right, Chief, as of today? I'll keep my comments brief. The only comment I was up here talking about is, back in February, you guys approved what is Attachment D. That was part of the transportation tax and the public safety balancing plan. And it shows that we should have about 3125 filled by the end of 2019, June of 2019. And that goes, I think, to Councilman DeCecio's question, reference to the attrition. And we are also very concerned about that from plea, because if we hire 300 people, but we lose 200 people, we only really gained 100 people. So we're going to be keeping a close eye on this. I'm in constant contact with our esteemed budget director, Jeff Barton. We talk weekly to make sure we are hiring for attrition, but it's very important that we also keep hiring for attrition so we get to that 3125 number at the end of June 19, which was the agreement we all came together with of the transportation fund. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bouvetas, Officer Bouvetas. Day Dawson, followed by Joanne Scott Woods. Did you want to write testimony? I have a card, I have two cards from you. One says not to speak, one says to speak. And the one that says not to speak just has a note saying, please be mindful of application of funds to improve our police officers. Did you want to provide more testimony? Please. And then followed by Joanne Scott Woods. And you have up to two minutes to write testimony.
Oh, my gosh. This is a response that is from Ayana, an 11-year-old. And I'm going to download it. Oh, I'm so sorry. Here it is. My name is Ayana and my daddy remained-- "My name is Ayana, and my daddy, Romaine Brisbane, was murdered by police officer Mark Ryan. I want justice for my dad. He did not deserve to be killed by him. My dad was not a harm to him. Why was my dad's murder not put on trial like anyone else who's murders? Why has he not been given a fair shot for justice? I am now in fear of the police more now than ever. My dad was a good father and a good man. Why can't I get the same justice for my dad like other families do? Police should not be able to go around and shoot unarmed people and get away with it. What happens to our justice system? I do not believe the system is here to protect us. When cops, when our cops, excuse me, are going to be held responsible when they kill people who are unarmed, police are supposed to have bad judgment. I never received an apology from them, even for killing my dad. We need more police training and body cameras because I know my dad would get justice then because officers can lie and we would never know. Now me and my sisters have no dad who is always, was always here for us. What about us now? We are fatherless because your police officer's bad judgment."
All right, I think that was Ms., you're Ms. Woods, is that correct? Okay, and I think Ms. Day Dawson had to leave the meeting, so I have no other cards for testimony here today. So I'll turn it back over to the city council. Any additional comments or questions for our police chief on this item? Vice Mayor.
Now, this is positive news, Chief. Thank you so much for the presentation. Milton, Ed, Commander, or, sorry, Chief Kurtenbach, and your team. I remember four years ago, the position that the city of Phoenix was in, to have this hiring freeze, to not be able to hire a police officer for several years. It didn't sit right. It shouldn't sit right. I mean, how could any of us say that public safety is the number-one priority of any government, certainly the city of Phoenix, with the five-year hiring freeze? Finding ourselves in a position to not, to be hundreds of police officers below the authorized strength, if you will, as we've been. And, you know, we worked together. It took us out to DC to work on the COPS grant. We were awarded the largest COPS grant in the nation a couple of years ago, $1.83 million, which equated to 15 cops. Certainly wasn't the hundreds of cops that we needed, but every police officer is incredibly just invaluable to the community that he or she is serving in. Continuing to stay diligent, finding nine more police officers to add into a budget in that same year, finding a few more officers here and there. I know, Chief, you had your hands full as you have, you know, even merged precincts, trying to figure out how to make sure that everyone is getting the service that we need, that our families need. I've done ride-alongs. I know what it's like to be in a police car. And I will say that, you know, I think most people realize that I'm also a firefighter. And I've been on many, many scenes as a firefighter, working with our police officers. But even from that perspective, we really don't get it unless we are actually in that police car, listening to that police officer deal with some of the things that that police officer has to deal with. There, depending on the type of crime, there are people who are waiting many, many hours, you know, to get a police officer to actually take a report. Today, you know, listening to you, Chief, of course, I will go back to a few months ago, when this council adopted a budget for the first time in many years, a budget that calls for the hiring of more than 200 first responders, both police and firefighters, for the first time, I think, probably since 2007 or before. Today, I think, I feel confident in actually, you know, saying that public safety is the number-one priority of this government, of the city of Phoenix, getting to a place to assure that our community is as safe as we can possibly be. And it's two parts there. It's protecting the public, and it's, you know, I mean, public safety and safety of our officers is paramount. We have to be sure that our officers have what they need to be sure that they are going home to their families, which I know is incredibly important to you, Chief, and to you, Will, and to everyone else who's out there serving. So this is, this is what it's all about. You know, it's paramount. It is about public safety. A safe community will contribute to a strong economy. You know, the presentation prior was all about light rail and one of the strongest, I'm sorry, transportation. And one of the strongest points was the economic impact to light rail. And, you know, at the end of the day, people want to feel safe when they're on light rail. They want to feel safe when they get off of the train. They want to feel safe when they're getting, when they're boarding or reboarding a bus and so on. So, you know, this is, this is real progress, I think, and something that will be appreciated by the people who live in Phoenix, who visit Phoenix, who work in Phoenix. And this is a strong statement, that public safety, in fact, is the number-one priority of this government, of this city, when we, when we actually make it possible to hire the way we plan on doing now and in the future. For those officers who have been serving, who figured out a way to continue to do more with less, you know, missing your lunch breaks, missing, you know, just phone calls here and there, checking in with your family, I sincerely thank you. Again, as someone who was out there, you know, we just don't get it. People, we don't understand, and I still don't understand, actually, frankly, what our officers have continued to go through, but certainly have gone through while they've been, while you've been understaffed. So fortunately, you know, we're moving in the right direction. And I appreciate your leadership, Chief Yonner, and, of course, the leadership of PLE as well. It's a, it certainly is a cooperation, collaboration, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Additional comments? Councilwoman Daigle, please.
Thank you very much. It is exciting to see us hiring. We heard from our officers that they would love to see more training. We heard from the community that that was a priority, and we heard from the chief that that was a priority, but that you needed more officers to be able to keep us at good levels while those other officers were in training. And so I think this is a win, and we can go forward and continue to invest in strengthening our department and meeting multiple different objectives at once, which is very exciting. We, in District 8, have been getting a lot of information on, interest on making sure the police force is reflective of our community. And some of our constituents recommended that we look at Minneapolis's cadet training program. So had a great chance to meet with my counterparts on the Minneapolis City Council, and they said they did feel like their cadet program got individuals from across their community in early and helped them understand the very rigorous standards in front of officers, and that that advanced training, both on the physical and mental side, helped them get the type of police force they wanted to. So I'd love your perspective on whether there's anything we can learn from their cadet programs and give our recruiters yet another tool in their tool test. And then Councilman Noakowski and I would wanted to check in on the Estrella Maryvale precinct and see if, as we continue to grow, if we can be mindful of when is the appropriate time to, once again, have two complete precincts in that particular area. And I know my colleagues in other parts of the district probably have similar requests, but I think that we do hear often from our community that as we go back to higher levels of police officers, that they really appreciate if we look at the precinct structure.
Mayor, Councilwoman, we will look at Minneapolis's program. We have explorers, and we've had cadets in the past. Unfortunately, when you go through six years of not hiring, our cadets moved on. So that is one part of our plan, is to rebuild our cadet program, and we have that in the works, and we will look at that other program. One of our FTO squads, where we are putting some of our newer, our new recruits, is in the Maryvale-Estrella precinct. That is a huge precinct, and I would love to split it up in the future as we get more people and go back to the old, maybe not exactly the exact boundaries because demographics change, but to go to a two precinct concept in that area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Other comments by members of this council? I just want to say thank you, not only you, Chief, but obviously the recruiting team. You guys are going to be very, very busy, and we're, I know you're going to do a great job, and we're counting on you to make sure that, again, the standards don't decrease in any regard, and that the recruits coming in are at the highest levels and represent the wonderful diversity that we are blessed to have here in Phoenix. And I know that the recruiting team is 100% committed in making that happen, and we're going to be a better city as a result of it. It's obviously a unique, exciting opportunity. Is this the, is this the largest hiring spree that we've had in at least modern Phoenix history when it comes to hiring police officers for the city of Phoenix?
You know, it's real close. Back in '07, '06, '07, we were close to some of these numbers in a fiscal year. I'll have to check on that, but we are definitely very high.
Excellent. All right, and this is not set for any action before this council, because we already made that vote previously to make this decision, but wanted to get this report from our chief. So Chief, thank you very much for that update. Mr. Dehony, thank you much for the update. There be no further business before the city council. This policy session is now adjourned.